Okay, we're going to start with Visit Baltimore at this time. They do have a presentation to share. If any representatives from Visit Baltimore who will be answering questions, please make sure that you state your first and last name and also your capacity with Visit Baltimore prior to speaking. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. And to the committee, good morning. I'm Al Hutchinson, President and CEO at Visit Baltimore. So we appreciate the time this morning to share with you our budget presentation and also give you a couple of quick updates before we go to Q and A. I think part of the request was the org chart, which we gave just sort of a broad look. We can give a deeper dive of our org chart if that's of interest to the committee. So we'll be definitely interested in providing you that. I think most of you all know from the council's standpoint what our mission is. We're all about driving economic impact to Baltimore City from hotel taxes, restaurants, making sure folks have a really good experience in Baltimore City. It's always been the mission of our organization, both from a leisure traveler, meetings and conferences, as well as special events coming to our city. Our goals for 2026 are really just threefold. Number one is to continue to expand storytelling in Baltimore, about the positive stories of Baltimore, whether it's arts and culture, whether it's about the food scene, whether it's about history, whether it's about sports. We are the good news organization at Visit Baltimore. So we want to continue to expand our storytelling, talking about all of our great neighborhoods in Baltimore City. The third thing is, we want to continue to bring convention business to our city. That's very important. That's our main driver, is hotel taxes to Baltimore. So we're going to continue to work on strategies to identify new conventions and conferences to the city. And the third big goal for us is working with the Baltimore Convention Center Task Force to get approval from both the city council, the mayor, the state, to do a governance model and modernization renovation of our convention center. So those are the three main focus areas that our budget, which is in front of you now, will support this year. An almost $9 million budget, 8.8 million is the budget we'll be using this year for FY26. And the two main performance measures that we've been using since I've been here are, number one, how many total visitors we get to Baltimore. That's a big driver, both for day trippers and for overnight stays. We focus all of our storytelling, all of our marketing, our sales efforts on driving visitation to Baltimore. And you'll see the actual numbers in 2025, I'm sorry, for 2024 was 27.5 million visitors. And then the hotel taxes, which the total taxes collected, the city collects 60% of that and Baltimore's, Visit Baltimore gets 40% via state law. And obviously, we took a little dip during COVID and it's slowly coming back. And we're hoping in 2026, we'll be back to really where we were pre-pandemic. So the budget, we're going to work very closely with to make sure we keep our expenses down as much as possible, but also drive great business to Baltimore. And the last thing I'll just say to you before we turn it over for Q and A. My teammates that are here, Kareem Swinton, Vice President of Sales and Experiences here, Craig Vey, our Chief Financial Officer, Mia Blom, our Director of Community Affairs, Government Affairs, and our Executive Director of our Education and Training Foundation. We are, a couple of things I just want to say really quick. Really want to clarify the excitement about CIAA basketball tournament. A lot of you all saw some news yesterday, as well as Monday. Just to get that correct, it's not a complete win yet. That was a little premature. The Baltimore delegation led by Mayor Scott will be going to Petersburg, Virginia on June 11th to do our presentation to the 13 presidents who have to vote. They have not voted yet, so we have to honor the process. Everything sounds good. We are very excited. But I'm a process guy and I want to honor the president's voting on their pleasure. And so we're going down to present a winning proposal on June 11th, but we have to let the process play out. So we think it's exciting, but stay tuned. And then secondly, from a public relations perspective, I think Mia has left with you one of our new brochure or magazines from Travel and Leisure that did a great article on Baltimore. We had invited some journalists down a few months ago. And from a public relations perspective, we got a really good plug in Travel and Leisure Magazine. And then a group of us about a month ago, we're in New York City with our public relations firm, again, Driving Earned Media, as they call it, to get really good positive stories about Baltimore. So we're hoping some of those stories will be coming out really, really soon. Last thing I'll say is, I want to thank this body for your support of me personally over the almost nine years at Visit Baltimore. Most of you all know I'm going to be sort of rolling off from this position, June 30. But I'm excited this morning to really announce that Kareem Swinton has been appointed by our board to be interim president and CEO effective July 1st. And the board has also asked for me to come back to help Kareem in a succession planning way. Kareem has been in Baltimore. He's been on the sales side for eight years, out in the market, helping to bring convention business to Baltimore City. You haven't seen him much because he's out trying to sell the city. And he's done a really, really good job for us. But he's also spent about eight years with Marriott Hotels and he's spent a lot of his Marriott years here in Baltimore. So he knows the city very, very well. His daughter goes to Coppin State on volleyball scholarship. So he's invested in the city. He's excited about the role. But my job is to help Kareem and also to help Baltimore continue to advance and grow. So we're excited about that. And you can hear more from Kareem during a Q and A. But we're excited about the budget. We're excited about the goals we can do for this year. Our job is to continue to grow and promote the great city of Baltimore. So with that, I'll pause and we can get into some Q and A. So thank you very much.
Colleagues, if you have any questions, please fill out the yellow sheet and send them down. You will have the option, the ability to ask two questions. With these two questions, you have one follow-up each. And we're going to start with Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director, it has been nothing but a pleasure working with you. I really appreciate your commitment to Baltimore, your commitment to this work. And so I just want to say thank you on behalf of the city for your nine years of service. Thank you for all that you've done to promote our town.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yep. Where I remain concerned, last month, Baltimore experienced the least amount of homicides we have ever experienced since 1970, when they started counting. That follows year after year declines in violent crime, specifically homicide and non-fatal shootings. That is extraordinary and it is to the credit of Mayor Scott, State Attorney Bates, law enforcement, the governor, the council, most importantly, communities in this city that said, "We've had enough." I do not feel like we have done an adequate job of telling that story. I hear far too often the same tired narrative about Baltimore, mostly from other places. And usually it starts with, "Oh yeah, I saw the wire." And so what I want to understand, and I think this is to Mr. Kareem, but I think we are missing an opportunity to tell what, to me, is really one of the greatest comeback stories in American history. When I look at the sheer decline of violence in our numbers and when I compare it to other cities, and I understand that we're seeing a national decline in violent crime across the country, but ours is profound. And I feel like it is not, even when I talk to Baltimoreans, they're not clear on the decline in violent crime in our city. And it impacts tourism. It impacts economic development. It impacts our small businesses, our restaurants, our cultural institutions. What are we going to do to turn the corner on this story about our city, which I am tired of hearing, which is murder capital, heroin capital, overdose capital? We have got to punch out a better narrative about Baltimore. And so from this agency's perspective, and again, I believe this is from Mr. Kareem and congratulations on your interim role, I need to understand the plan to really effectively communicate what Baltimore is doing and that we are winning in this moment.
Let me go first, if you will. I'll turn it over to Kareem. But great question, Mr. President, and great perspective as well. Couple of things I'll say to that is, one, on a global level, I'm talking out of market. We have about 13 sales folks and we're leading with that story now. We're leading with Baltimore's numbers. We get data from Public Safety Office that's front and center in our storytelling for convention customers. Because, believe me, the convention customer, public safety is number one, right? So the convention side, you have a lead time. You know, you're telling the story, but they're not going to come like next week. You tell the story so you can get business for '26, '27, and beyond. So I will say to your great setup question, we are telling that story. We're leading with it. And this is a good news story. And for years and years, we were trying to defend what the numbers look like. So we are telling that story better now than ever. Kareem can talk about a little bit more tactically what the sales team's doing. The last thing I'll say to this is, fortunately, thank you to Mayor Scott and his team. We received a federal opera money. And so we have that money. Our Chief Marketing Officer, Trish McLean, is working on a regional campaign. Because one of the challenges in Baltimore, not so much from folks in Chicago, not so much from folks in Texas, the challenge is our five surrounding counties who don't come to see us. And so we are developing a campaign to talk to our five surrounding counties better about the numbers, better about arts and culture, better about the food scene, better about, "Come see us in Baltimore." So that's coming. We're working on that plan as we speak. And I would think in the next couple of months, you'll see that in the local market. A lot of what we do, you don't see because it's 200, 300 miles out and we're talking to customers. But you will see some local campaigns really, really soon.
Look, and Al, and I have enormous respect for you and the work you've done. But telling our story, you know, 60 miles, somewhere else, in some other place, I think it has to start internally. I think Baltimore has to get clear on its own successes if we're going to tell that story effectively externally, particularly to your point, to our surrounding jurisdictions. There is so much cynicism about Baltimore and it's a hard thing to overcome. But I think whatever the campaign is, we all have to be singing from the same hymnal. Because again, I just hear this over and over and over again. And when I talk to folks in our streets, when I talk to folks in Baltimore County, this idea that we have seen dramatic declines in violent crime, and I know it's a lagging indicator, but it's not there in the public consciousness yet. And it really needs to be if we're going to have the Renaissance that we're all expecting.
Yeah, I agree. And I would just say, we got to do both. We got to do the local story and we better do the out-of-town story or we're going to be killed in the next three to five years. So we got to do both. Your point's right on. So Kareem, why don't you talk a little bit about tactically how we're approaching it?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Al. Thank you, Councilman, for the questions. So for us, I have these 13 team members that are going off across the country. Usually, I call them our passionate foot soldiers.
I'm sorry, can you state your first and last name in the passing here?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry about that. Kareem Swinton. I'm the Vice President of Sales and Customer Experience here at Visit Baltimore. And I was just saying that I consider my team the passionate foot soldiers when they go out. And that's usually because we are met with obstacles where people are talking about those things initially when we get into their faces, when we're going out on calls. So we've been leading with 40% down in violent crime, especially because the surrounding cities around us, when you talk about DC to the south, Philadelphia to the north, they have issues that are on the rise that we do not right now. And I think it's changing the course. But we combine that with the development plan that we have, where we talk about all the development going on in the city because things aren't dormant like people perceive. So our job is to tell the true story of what's happening in the city. That's why we're going out and talking to them. We do need to amplify more in a campaign way. On June 16th through the 18th, we have our Customer Advisory Board that will be coming in the city. And this is a part of our conversation, talk to them about what other cities have done from a campaign standpoint, to talk through how they are changing that perception. They started off with the development piece first. That's why we started talking about Warner Street. We started talking about Harbor Place Development. We started talking about a lot of developments throughout the city because that's what changed their perspective when we had a lot of the DC customers that were on that advisory board that were talking to us about how DC was years ago and changed their perception. So those are some of the things we're coupled with. But one of the biggest things for us is small businesses. So we take small businesses on the road with us. We take them in different markets to talk because there's no better person to speak to the testimony of what's happening within the city than those small business owners. So usually when they are a part of our structure and talking to customers, it really does help with the perception because local downtown and throughout the neighborhoods and the cities are safe. They need to hear also from someone who lives and breathes here. And a lot of times I do tell them too, that, you know, I know it's only a small part, but my daughter lives close to, she lives in the city herself. I would not put her in the city where I didn't feel like she would be safe. I would not be in the city myself where I didn't feel like she would be safe. This also resonates with customers, resonates with visitors, resonates with our team. I think that that's important. So we are going to put more skin in the game with this. We are talking to our advisory board when they come in the 16th to the 18th to talk about this along with a lot going on the BCC. Because those change, those things that we echo out to our customer base when we go outside of the city and in DC and outline counties is important for them to hear from us so they can know what's going on continuously. And we also have a safety and security alliance that's helped us with this because we add additional security. We talk to each customers coming into the convention center and the meetings that are happening at the hotels to find out what their flow is so we can make sure that they feel safe and secure by additional security or alerting and talking to law suspension officers on property along with Baltimore Police Department. So I think the customers are starting to change their perspective on things. We have to be cognizant that we have to make sure that we're in their face most times because the other cities also are competitors of ours, for sure. And they don't have some of the obstacles in certain ways. So they try to shoot us down. That's why we make sure we're in their face all the time to talk to them about what we are doing within the city, to kind of dispel the myth.
I appreciate that. There should be a national story on how Baltimore is leading the country on violent crime. It should be in The New York Times. It should be in every major paper in the country. And it should be told by Baltimoreans. And I would like to see a plan. I would like to see a coordinated messaging campaign, strategic plan. Can you produce a plan for how we are going to get our story more effectively out there? You mentioned there's sort of a start of a campaign. What's a date by which the council can expect that plan?
I don't think we can give you the date on the plan. But what I would say to you, Mr. President, we will share as we put the plan together. We need to do that in concert with this committee, with the mayor's office. So we'll be coming back with you so you can see it in draft form. We should also, this, and your point's right on. We need to also partner with like the Greater Baltimore Committee that has released their new brand message that we need to be able to push out regionally and nationally. So I think there's more partners that should be at the table than just Visit Baltimore. But we will definitely make sure that this group, this body, is a part of that process because it's important for us to tell the story. We can pitch The New York Times and other major publications to help us, but that's a process as well. And so our team, I'll make sure we get that to Trish and then we'll come back to this body with where we are in the process. Because this is a sense of urgency for us, just like you. Because the longer we wait, the longer we're missing visitors, the longer we're missing conventions. So we're going to be on it and it's very, very important to us as well. We're in alignment here completely.
As a committee request, I'm just going to ask that by the end of these budget hearings, that we have a conversation, your team and my team, about the trajectory for a better communications plan.
100%.
Director, truly appreciate all your service to Baltimore.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess my questions will, or statement, will kind of lead into and piggyback what the president was just discussing. But first, I want to thank you for all the work you can continue to do. And I haven't had a chance to meet Craig yet, but I'm looking forward to that. First, I want to, I guess this is my chance to put in that blurb about the National Association of Counties and Maryland Association of Counties. And being a part of that organization, I have personally experienced and have seen the work that Visit Baltimore puts into this city. Just by chance, running into you at certain venues around the country just kind of shows that we're in sync. But I think the president probably would like more collaboration with the county, adding that piece with the council. I know that you all have been working hard with the CIAA, continuing that and getting, bringing in revenue for our city with that. The magazine that you do and have stretched out to not just downtown, but have included areas in different parts of the outlining council districts, even some areas of Park Heights. I just, I think one good start is for you to also be involved with the Maryland Association of Counties and the National Association of Counties. We have a national conference coming to Philly in July. And it would be a good time to maybe do a session right there about Baltimore because people are going to be coming all over the place. There has not been a conference on the East Coast from that organization in a long time. I personally, being, you know, on the board of the Maryland Association of Counties, brought a retreat here that was very beneficial because it included all of the rural and our surrounding metropolitan area counties. And they came here for a three-day conference. And the reason why I really pushed that, because I wanted them to see and feel, they didn't want to leave. And they came back to different restaurants and other venues around the city and are still doing that. So my plea is to, now that they know, to be present and kind of push that. Maybe at the Mako Summer Conference, I can help you get you to do a session. We usually have that. We have the Winter Conference in Cambridge and the Summer Conference in Ocean City. You can do a session just talking about Visit Baltimore and just continue to help push that message. So I'll stop there and I'd like you to comment on that.
Well, thank you very much, Councilwoman Middleton. You know, we will continue to partner with you like we've done in the past, both on the National Association and the state. So I know Mia has been down at Mako to do some things. So transitioning with Kareem's leadership, we'll continue to partner with you. We want to get the word out to as many associations as possible about all the great things we have going on in the city. So whatever we can do to partner in the future, we will continue to do that.
Thank you. And that's what it's all about, just trying to collaborate and working together to get the same message out. Because we're kind of just doing certain things in silos and it takes a while to basically work together. So I know many people on your team that have been very good as well. And keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton. Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Director. I just want to echo what all my colleagues are saying. I'm going to specifically say Mia is a wonderful addition to your team. She has always been very helpful and also knowledgeable just about with everything that's happening in Visit Baltimore. I want to dovetail off of the Council President's comments regarding the plan. We have a significant amount of micro-influencers within the city that have such reach within our region, within our nation, and sometimes on TikTok within our world. How are we leveraging those micro-influencers, like the boy with the blue beard? I follow him, Chino. There are other micro-influencers that we've seen being leveraged by other chains, such as Marriott, such as some of the Travel and Leisure brands. How can we begin to leverage those micro-influencers within our own city, given that they reside in our city?
Yeah, great question. I'll speak to it and I know Kareem can add to it. Couple of things we do. Number one, if you recall back in 2019, when we did the rebrand for Visit Baltimore, we used our social influencers to help us with that rebrand. In fact, the copywriter for our rebrand was Kondwani Fidel. And Kondwani, at that time, 26-year-old spoken-word artist, wasn't really getting a lot of love from the city, to be real honest. And we partnered with Kondwani. Kondwani became the copywriter. He wrote a great poem about Baltimore that was posted up a lot of places, Camden Yards, for an example. The boy with the blue beard, Chino, we've taken Chino on the road with us. He went down to Atlanta two years ago at a national exhibition to really teach people how to open crab and eat crab. And we end up winning the best-in-show in Atlanta for the first time ever. And that was Chino, his love of Baltimore. But Michael with Make Your Art Coffee has been helping us close deals. We work very, very closely with the social influencers because they have stake in the ground in Baltimore. They love Baltimore. So we partner. They're part of our storytelling. When we were in New York a couple of months ago, we partnered with folks who did house music. We took them with us to really celebrate that genre in Baltimore that a lot of journalists don't know about. So we're going to continue to do that. That's important of the Baltimore story. That is the DNA of Baltimore. And twice a year, Visit Baltimore, we do a meetup with social influencers. And we do it for, the main reason why is to thank them. To thank them for what they do. Most of them are entrepreneurs. We thank them for the love of Baltimore. And we also want them to know that we want to take them with us to tell the Baltimore story. And the third point to that is, we do that, but they're also compensated. So if we're going to partner with social influencers, we want them to tell the story, tell the love of Baltimore. But they're business owners and they should be paid and compensated for their love. So I can tell you, I can't speak for any other entity. Visit Baltimore, the social influencers in this city, they're going to always be a part of our storytelling because they know this city better than most and they definitely love Baltimore. So I know Kareem and the sales team has done a lot with these folks. And Kareem, I don't know if you want to add anything to it?
Not much to add. I would just say that Chino has always been a great advocate of ours. We didn't just take him to Atlanta. We took him to other markets as well. Chicago, we recently did, where we had Chino come with us as well. And then also, when we traveled to like even San Diego with Khalila, with Mess in the Bottle, taking her there and having her do shirts. But it's really about, for me, it's really about not our team, the outreach. Because a person that would be here may not have the national recognition that they probably deserve in what they're doing. But she's local Baltimore and also speak to all the people that are coming up to us, which is around 2,000 people within a day, to speak on behalf of Baltimore, how she was able to thrive here and how even when times were hard, the community helped uplift her. I want Visit Baltimore to be able to tell that story to get out because people need more than just a place to actually host meetings. They need a place where they feel comfortable, they feel good about themselves when they come. And I don't really feel like anybody can tell that story better than us with people who work here, live here, breathe here, small business community. So we are also building an ambassador program we're working with right now in order to kind of get better with the creators that we have. We have a great connection with them right now. I can't tell you, probably one of the best events that we do this year where we actually meet up with them and talk through new things because they give me so many creative ideas as well. But we will continue to utilize them. It is one of our greatest assets, to be honest with you. It's a competitive advantage for us, I believe, versus other destinations. So it's definitely a big part of our plan.
Yeah, and Madam Councilwoman, we're also, this is sort of breaking news on a news story. So Dee Watkins.
Yes.
Great storyteller in this city. He's working with Carmelo Anthony in the Enar Pratt Library to really celebrate Carmelo's work. But not only celebrate Carmelo's work as an NBA Hall of Famer, but to give young folks hope and aspiration as to they can achieve their dreams. So we met with Dee and Khalila last week. And I know the city's going to partner with Dee. We're going to partner with Dee on this exhibition that's going to roll out in September because we think that's the right thing to do. It helps us to amplify our storytelling. And so stay tuned to that. That's going to be a great rollout at all the Enar Pratt libraries around the city. And we're excited about this one. This is going to be a big play for Baltimore on the national level as well as local.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson, for all you've done and you've been...
Again, thank you, Mr. Hutchinson, for all you've done, and you've built a really great foundation, I think, that, you know, is really, sounds like it's ready to move to the next level. So I'm grateful for your time and your team. I want to just add that Live Baltimore needs to be another partner that you're bringing together. What I want to see is that people come and visit, and then they stay.
Agreed.
They have to stay, okay? And we know when people come here, they come here again and again, and once they're here and they stay for a little while longer, maybe they'll live here for a few years, they actually don't leave. So I want to make sure that that trajectory, when we're talking about a campaign, is very clearly, we want you to visit and we want you to stay, and how that would, you know, go with that. So I want to ask you about what your partnership is right now with Live Baltimore. They just launched a big campaign as well, and I want to make sure that you're actually amplifying that as well. You get, Visit Baltimore gets a lot more money because of the hotel tax, and so you've got an interest in bringing in visitors to be able to go into the hotels. But Live Baltimore is one of the pieces that helps us with actually bringing in our tax base, which we get more money from the property tax. So it still doesn't make sense to me why they're not as funded as Live Baltimore, as Visit Baltimore is. So I want to make sure that there is that partnership between them. If there isn't one now, that's unfortunate, but it really needs to be in the future, because if we're really selling Baltimore, it's not just for people to visit, it's for people to come here and stay.
There is a relationship, and with their new leader, Megan, we're working with her very closely. We've always worked with Live Baltimore, but, you know, there's always more we can do, and we will, and this team's committed to that, and we'll be working with her on this new campaign as well. Because you're absolutely right. We, our jobs is for folks to visit, but we want them to fall in love with Baltimore. If they fall in love with it, they may want to decide to buy a home here, or tell another family member to move to Baltimore. So that's an important connection, and Live is a part of the collaboration that we want to do in the future as well.
And it's also to the council president's point, that if people here feel good about the city and have the messaging about feeling good about the city, that helps keep people here as well. So it's a, both and. And Mia, were you going to add to that? I saw you put on the microphone. No? Okay. So I hope that we can, you know, add that to the conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
As well, that the council president was interested in. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Councilman Jones.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say thank you for all the work you do. The work you and your team are doing is going to be vital to Baltimore taking her next step and, you know, living out her greatness, I always say. But I do want to echo the council president's suggestion of having a plan, but also highlight one of the most important things about that plan is within it defining who we are as a city. I think often we allow other people to define who we are. I feel like ever since industry left, you know, Baltimore kind of lost its identity, and we never really planted on this who we, this is who Baltimore is as a city. And if that can also be incorporated in that plan, uplift that. That way, we don't leave open the opportunity for others to say who Baltimore is and who we are, because when they do, it's often for the negative stuff. Because, and it sticks, because there isn't a positive identity sometimes that we all coalesce, uplift, and stand behind. And whatever that is, you know, we all need to speak with one tone about it and, you know, spread the word about it. Because one thing I often hear, when people visit, when people who live in Baltimore, they always say, "I came to Baltimore just expecting not to stay here long, but I came here and fell in love, and now I decided to stay here and raise my kids here, but I had no idea I was going to love this city that much." And I think that happens, because people don't know who we are, you know? And then they just up and fall in love, because they had to come here because of a job or whatever. But if we can, you know, let people know who we are before they, who we are before we get here, I think more people will come and want to stay. And around the idea of just us all speaking the same tone, I guess my suggestion would be, because there's external factors, I feel like which makes it difficult, always trying to define who we are, who we are as a city in a negative light, it impacts businesses, right? And it impacts residents. And I think there is a large group of local residents and business owners who are frustrated at that as well, saying, you know, people are scared to come into the city, because there's people whose sensational lives, anything negative. And I think if we can tap into that as well, you know, those individuals who feel like this is negatively impacting their business, they will be just as excited about spreading that message. And just the last thing I just want to highlight is, we just got to keep spreading our wins, you know, keep talking about our wins, because I think sometimes we aren't as quick to highlight our wins, because, you know, we aren't perfect, because there are still challenges within the city. But I don't think we have to wait perfection to like talk about how great Baltimore is, and like to really highlight our little wins, because I think that's what's going to allow those little steps to turn into bigger steps. That was just kind of my, you know, little comments. But my last question and suggestion is, recently, I've looked at software that kind of tracks who comes into the city or who comes into certain areas, and, you know, where they come from, how long they stay, what places they visit. Have you all used that type of software as well, to kind of figure out who Baltimore ideal customer is, and how we can kind of bring that, keep having them come to Baltimore?
Yes, sir. Councilman Jones, so we use AI, Placer AI, that we've paid money to use that, and that helps us to determine where folks are coming from, how long they're staying, and we know geographically where they live. So, you know, we follow people, right? And so that's the new time we're living in, unfortunately, but that's reality. So we do use that platform. It helps us a lot. We're going to continue to use it. And we also partner with city agencies who need that data. Downtown Partnership needs it from time to time for different festivals. So it's a good platform that we use. We have a data person on our team who sort of helps us with that. I want to go back, though. You made some really good points about how we have to make sure we're all unified, we have the right tone, we're telling the right message. And one thing I'm hearing loud and clear from the body, Visit Baltimore, we have to do a better job of connecting with the committee the story about Baltimore. And so when we do this new regional campaign, we need to make sure in lockstep, we will follow this group with where we are with it in a draft form. But one of the things we've done in 2019, when we rolled out our new brand messaging, that brand resonated, not only with Baltimore citizens, because they saw themselves in the brand. For the very first time, they saw people of color in the brand, they saw creatives in the brand, they saw gay folks in the brand, and that was important to us. And so we're continuing to build on that. We have a creative firm that's helping us to tweak it. This is 2025 now, we need to refresh it. In this business of telling stories, you need to refresh every couple of years, or you're dying. So it's being refreshed as we speak, because one of the things we often hear from visitors, to your point, once they get here, wow, I had no idea. I did not know. And Kareem and his team hear it all the time. So what we've done with this, in tweaking our rebrand, the creative team said, "We need to take that, because that's real." And now we're using a new tagline, "You won't get it until you get here." And so, but this needs, you all need to know that's out there. If we're doing it and you don't know, that's a disconnect. And so that's on us, and I'll make sure we show you that. We've shown it around the country, and people love it. But we need to make sure the council, the mayor's team, and our residents understand it as well, because it is real. You won't get it until you get to Baltimore, and then you fall in love with it. So we're going to take your heat at this committee to make sure you see our messaging, and you're a part of it, and you give us some input on it. That's extremely important to us.
No, I greatly appreciate it, because we all want to be a part of the success.
One hundred percent.
So thank you.
Yes, sir.
Colleagues, we have two additional questions. Please be comprehensive and concise in any comments that you're offering, as well as your questions to end. We're going with Councilmember Blanchard at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Hutchinson, the Visitor Center, which happens to be in my district, very curious to hear of, you know, what plans are. I know that the city owned, run by Visit Baltimore, and so what's being considered for it as we try to reinvigorate the harbor?
Yes, sir. That's a great question, Councilman. So we've been working very closely with the city as to what's the next generation for the Visitor Center. The reality for the Visitor Center, it's a beautiful structure, beautiful structure. But the numbers, as far as visitors coming into the building, has dropped over the past few years. So we don't get a lot of visitors coming into the building. We have some other homeless folks get, come into the building from time to time. So that's a challenge of how do we reinvent that venue? And we've also talked to MCB Real Estate about what their plans are. We think that building should be a part of the new Imagine Harbor, Inner Harbor. So we're still managing it as it is. We think it's a beautiful building. We have a staff member, a full-time employee, who's there managing it for us. We still use it. But the numbers is not really the way it should be, because what folks use now are these, to get their information. So I think there's a better way, and there's a better, best use for that venue than a Visitor Center.
All right, sounds good, yeah. I think you're absolutely right. It's a gorgeous space. I'm super biased, because I had my wedding reception there back in the day. It was very affordable and everything. But the, I would love to hear what options y'all are looking at. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Hutchinson, team. Just want to piggyback on some of the things my colleague has spoke about early on. Though Baltimore, it seems like we have lost our touch. We were one of those thriving cities when we had like the port with cars and things, and nature was coming out of the city. Everybody knew, bring your family to Baltimore, because you can grow here in Baltimore. Since then, we've seen some companies, you know, leave the city and things of that nature. Me and myself personally, born and raised, you know, right here in Baltimore, would like to just see that, you know, we really turned the lights on in this city. Like Baltimore has a lot of talent, you know, great talent here. And as you mentioned early on, you know, if we don't get it until you bring it here, us on the council, we don't see it either. So it's important that, you know, we have those lines of communication, you know, as we move forward. But my question is, you know, can you kind of detail the final 2.7 million that the loan that you guys had affected the operational capacity this year? So I know you guys had like a loan during the COVID times and things of the nature, and we're just trying to figure out, you know, that 2.7 million, how it's going to affect the operational, you know, status moving forward?
Well, great question, Councilman. The good news is that 2.7 million is the final year of that sort of COVID era.
It's the final year, right?
The final year of it. So it will be paid during this FY26 budget, and the balance is at 8.8 million that we're going to be operating under this year. So I think, you know, our budget is slowly coming back to where it was pre-COVID, and actually, next year, we're going to be in a really good place with budget. But the 2.7 is the last payment for the money that we owed back to the city, and we're excited that this is the final payment for that.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're going to be back at 12:55. Thank you to the team from Visit Baltimore.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're ending at this time. We'll see you later.
Thank you.